Good evening, everyone. We are going to call now the Subcommittee on Conference being held Wednesday, April 28th at 6:00 PM. This meeting will be held via conference video, watched on the City Conference via Facebook Live and Comcast Channel 22. The subject matter to be discussed tonight is the acceptance of Eastern Avenue as a city-owned roadway. Officials invited to attend to the Subcommittee meeting is City Manager Tom Ambrosino, who's here. We have also Alex Train from Community Development and Housing and Assistant City Manager Ned Keef. Please call the roll.
Counselor Vidal, Counselor Avonata.
Here.
Counselor Recupero. Counselor Garcia.
Present.
Counselor Vega Maldonado. Counselor Robinson. Counselor Rodriguez. Counselor Taylor. Counselor Lopez. Counselor Brown.
Present.
And Counselor Zabick.
Present.
One, two, three, four, five, six. Seven members present. Mr. Chairman, you have a call.
I'm going to read the communication that was sent to us on May, March 15th, 2021, from the City Manager Tom Ambrosino to the Council. Dear Counselors, since I began my tenure here almost six years ago, I have been communicating with Mast Dot regarding its desire that the city acquire Eastern Avenue, which is currently a state-owned public way. The city and the Commonwealth have long ago agreed, in the days of receivership, that the city would eventually take ownership of the Eastern Avenue, following the Commonwealth's comprehensive reconstruction of that roadway in the late 1990s and early 200s. See the attached letter from Transportation Secretary James Curiotis to Receiver Louis H. Spence. For the past few years, we have been negotiating the terms of this acquisition with Mast Dot, including and requiring that Mast Dot perform certain final improvements. Those improvements include an installation of a new signal traffic system at the intersection of Eastern Avenue, Central, rather, Central, Eastern Avenue are now substantially complete. There is one remaining punch list item, the paving of Eastern Avenue from Willoughby Street to Broadway. Mast Dot has committed to complete this work as part of the acquisition of the roadway by the city. Further, once the city gains ownership of this roadway, we will issue a permit to the NWRA for a new traffic signal at the intersection of Eastern Ave. and Griffin Way, an improvement that the NWRA will fully fund. The first step in the legal process of acquiring ownership of this current state roadway is a vote by the City Council to approve the discontinuance of a state highway. Once this vote is completed, Mast Dot will undertake the required survey and legal work to formally transfer ownership to the city. For reasons above, I respectfully ask that the City Council approve the discontinuance of Eastern Avenue as a state highway. A draft order of the Order of Discontinuance is attached. Approval by the City Council will complete the promise made by the city during receivership to assume ownership and maintenance of this roadway in return for its reconstruction. Cecily Thomas Ambrosino. Mr. City Manager, at this time, I'll allow you to make your statement and also any other information you want to provide along with your staff.
Thank you, Mr. President. Honestly, I'm not sure I can add much substantively to what's in the cover letter. This is a commitment that the city made, and the state has been asking us to meet its promise. We've, you know, since the day I've arrived, we've been going back and forth with them over punch list items on the roadway. They have now done everything that the city had identified, you know, a decade ago that still wanted to be completed, and so it's, the state is looking to us to now accept the roadway. We did negotiate one final piece with them, which is to mill and pave certain sections that are a little bit in disrepair, and they will do that this construction season. They will mill a small section between Central, from the start, and then most of it from a point just past Willoughby to Broadway. So they're going beyond their jurisdiction. We, actually, the state highway, I think, ends at Lewis Street, but they will mill and pave to Broadway. So this is the proposal before you, is to adopt the Order of Discontinuance, which starts the legal process. Mast DOT then has to do some survey and some legal work to do all the paperwork necessary to transition the roadway from a state highway to city's jurisdiction. We'll get a tiny bit of additional Chapter 90 money, because we'll be adding a piece to our roadway, but, you know, we will be taking on this responsibility, paving the roadway, all, everything will belong to us. And, but this was a commitment the city made to get that street reconstructed many years ago.
At this time, I'll allow any of my colleagues to ask any questions if the City Manager or staff do not have anything else to add. Counselor Recupero, and then Counselor Brown.
Here's a couple of questions I want to ask.
Make sure the microphone is in front of you, so people at home can hear you.
Huh? Okay. Here's a couple of questions I want to ask. For one, I don't believe, is this feasible for us to get it? What would be the cost to us to get this road back? Because right now, well, it's a heavily trafficked road. Each year, there's tons of cars there, and as I've, I've lived there for many years, all the years, that road gets fixed two, three times a year. It's always getting fixed. So if we get, the state wants to give it back to us. What if we don't want it? What, what if we decide to let him keep it? Because if we, if we get it, right, then it's up to us to maintain all the time.
I agree with you. It is gonna, there's a cost to the city to maintain this roadway, but this was a commitment the city made. Can we break our promise to the state? Sure, we could, but the state may then break its promises to us. They can say, well, those parking lots, we promised you, we're not going to turn them over to you. That parkland next to the bridge that we were promised to give you, we're not going to give that to you. All the other things that we rely upon the state to work with us on, you know, the state can decide, if you're reneging on your promises to us, we will reneg on your, our promises to you. That is not the way to go about having a relationship with the Commonwealth. For whatever reason, the city committed to take this roadway once the state completed the reconstruction of the road. I don't know what the considerations were back in the 1990s, for why this made sense to the city, but it did at the time. I'm not second guessing that. I'm just telling you now, the promise is due, and we have to make good on it.
Okay, so, in other words, when, um, we have to maintain it if we take it back?
Correct.
Right now, it doesn't cost us anything. They maintain it.
They maintain it, they plow it. We will have to do both.
Everything goes to them. So what is the benefit to us, to taking it back? What will be our benefit?
The road was reconstructed at our request. That was the benefit. We got our benefit many years ago.
So, so in other words, the benefit is for us to spend money?
The benefit was the reconstruction of Eastern Avenue 20 years ago.
But I still, I'm going back to the same question again. I, I, you know, I'm saying.
My advice to the council is, my advice to the council is, when you make a promise, you have to keep it.
Do we have to take it back?
I'm advising you that that's the wisest choice in this situation.
But, okay, you advise us to get it back, right? But what was our benefits to getting it back? What are we gaining out of it?
There's not, at this point, there's not a lot to gain. You already got your benefit 20 years ago when the state reconstructed the roadway.
But, okay, I'm, I'm back to the same question again. You advise us to get it back, okay? For you, you, there should be some benefits to us. The benefit to us is that we own a road that, right now, we don't have to maintain. Once we own it, we have to maintain it, we have to pay, have to pave it, have to do everything to it. So, and we get nothing in return?
The state, you did get something in return. The state reconstructed the roadway, has done work on it, has installed new life.
Well, we have the pleasure to fix it.
I'm sorry?
Is that what you're saying? We'll have the pleasure to fix it?
From here on in, it will be our responsibility to maintain the roadway.
Yeah, then it'll be our responsibility. When something goes, we have to fix it. So that is the benefit we're getting out of it?
The benefit you got was the road was reconstructed.
Right, the benefit is road reconstruction. So in other words, we, we, we gonna say to the state, thank you for giving us our road, and we're gonna fix it now. That's the greatest benefit we're gonna get, that we're gonna cost taxpayers money, we're gonna have to maintain it, which is a heavily, heavily trafficked road.
I will say, there is some benefit to owning the road. It means that you don't have to get state permits for anything you want to do, so development along that corridor will be easier for the city and its developers. We won't need state permitting approval, which can be problematic at times.
But didn't, but didn't they develop over there now? They still had to come to us to get a permit, right?
Yes, but any development still requires additional permits when you're, when you're accessing a state highway. So there are additional permitting hurdles that a developer on Eastern Ave. needs to go through in order to develop. I'm not saying it's a huge benefit, but there is some benefit to the city for owning that roadway.
Well, okay, I'm back, I don't see, this is, I won't ask any more questions. This is my, what I believe this is. For one, there's no benefits to taking this road, because developed, not developed, they still come to us for permits. Two, that road is a heavily trafficked road. All the years that I've been there, I see that road being fixed two, three times a year. Now, the traffic is even heavier than it used to be. So now, we're saying to the taxpayers of our city, or even just to us ourselves, our counselors ourselves, we're saying, okay, we're gonna have the pleasure of the state to give us back the road.
The state is.
And we gotta have to maintain it.
The state is saying to you, you promised to do this. You have to keep.
We promised? I never promised?
The city of Chelsea did.
So do we, do the state keep every promise to us?
It has kept its promises since I've been here, yes, it has.
They keep every promise?
They have kept their promises that I have negotiated with them, yes.
So would they penalize it if we don't want it?
I would say you're running a risk that you're gonna have adverse consequences if you.
I got one more question. Every city has a portion of the, of, a city that's a state highway. I know East Boston has one, Lynn has one, Revia has one, Everett has one. Where is our portion besides Eastern Ave. that belongs to the state, that the state maintains?
Tobin Bridge.
Yeah, I would say the bridge is a state roadway.
Tobin Bridge, but that's.
Route 16.
Route 16 is the other state roadway.
Route 16 is mixed. It belongs to, that's, okay, that's one, but this part is strictly in the city of Chelsea. There's nothing around it. It's smack in the middle of the city of Chelsea. So I don't see it, no more questions. I don't see any benefits to taking this road back. We promised, what, in 1994, whenever we promised? Whoever promised then, I didn't promise, I don't know if my fellow counselors promised, and there's no benefit, so why would we want it? No more questions.
You should keep your promises. When a city makes a promise, it should keep it.
Counselor Brown.
Can you hear me?
I can hear you now.
Thank you, Mr. President. I, actually, Counselor Recupero got around some of the dots that I was gonna give, so I won't share that, but it seems to me, one thing is, we don't have the actual to clear what was written and what was promised and what was expected of the city, other than at some point that we would take control back over this, the street or the highway. I know, at this point, my first direct question is, we have no options, correct, Mr. Manager, or statement? We have no options, correct?
You always have options. I'm telling you that the appropriate wisest course is to keep your promise and accept the roadway. That's what we committed to doing.
All right, well, if I was playing devil's advocate, what options would we have?
Say no.
You could say no. I'm advising strongly against that.
Okay, so I got that. So now, in the event that we keep our bargain, we take the, we, we take back over the, the possible of the road, do we have any legal right to make changes far as traveling restrictions and, you know, height restrictions and weight restrictions of trucker trailers and oversights on vehicles? Can we, can we do that as a city?
So the roadway will be a city roadway. However, even city roadways are restrict, are limited in the restrictions that you could put on them. So in order to do a heavy trucking restriction on a road, even a road that the city owns, there is a process that the state requires you to go to. So I would say it is unlikely that you'd be able to restrict heavy trucking on this roadway, even if it becomes a city property. This is the designated trucking route for some other no-trucking routes that the city has gotten state approval to impose.
Well, I, I mean, even if I just kind of like draw way back, I would believe that was part of the purpose of making it uncontrollable with the state back then. Now that we're changing it, the city, as Recupero, Counselor Recupero stated, we're still going to see all that heavy, if not even heavier, trucking than now, which is unfair to the city, because there's no limitations or there's no option for us to say, hey, we want to prevent some of this, because this is no longer a, a highway, considered a highway, but it's now a city resident street.
You could, any, the city can petition for any city street to have a no-trucking restriction. There is a state mandated process to go through. Once we own this street, we could pursue that. I'm just giving you the realistic sense that it is unlikely that the state is going to approve a no-heavy trucking restriction on this roadway, notwithstanding that it will be owned by the city. It's still the state that has final sign-off on all no-trucking restrictions, even on a state-owned roadway, even on a city-owned roadway.
Okay, I understand. I mean, it's a tough one. I mean, it's, it's a lot of responsibility what we're taking on. I mean, it's a heavy cost, it's a heavy burden and a maintenance requirement. I understand that. But have you had a chance to find or read the document that stated why this was done and under what conditions it was supposed to be met on both parties?
The document that I have is the letter to the receiver from the Transportation Secretary back in the 90s, which basically confirms, we're gonna reconstruct this roadway, you're gonna take it over. And that's the.
At some point.
That's the commitment that Mast DOT has been relying upon for, you know, I don't, I can't tell you what discussions took place before I arrived. I can just tell you that since I arrived, Mast DOT raises this virtually every conversation I have had with them, whether we're negotiating over the Viaduct project, over any other roadway. They always, at the end, say, and by the way, we're doing this, but you're taking over Eastern Ave. when we're done with all the work, right? I would say that was the promise we made.
But I mean, if, again, lastly, and for argument's sake, what they're basically saying, we're complete, we've completed all the work we need to do here, now we want you to take this feedback.
Correct. They, there was a long, there was a significant punch list item document that existed when I arrived here, that our DPW had, that still included certain things that apparently, again, I wasn't privy to any discussions, but apparently Mast DOT had made certain commitments, fix sidewalks in certain areas, replace traffic lights, and eventually, over time, Mast DOT completed all of that outstanding work. And so at that point, they have now come to the city and said, we've done everything that was, we committed to doing to reconstruct this street, and now we're looking for you to make good on your side of the bargain, which is to take jurisdiction of.
So pretty much just take it back over, start opening up for development, and then, you know, we'll see the, we'll, we'll see the beauty of everyone working together.
You know.
Now, we have, we have the right now, the only thing that we can really do down there now is to, because of this great expense we're gonna have, is try to get another form of revenue that will help out with this understanding of what we, this responsibility we're now taking on. Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, I, I guess, you know, the, the immediate expense is gonna be the incremental cost of plowing this roadway next winter, the, you know, the fact that we will now be responsible to the extent anything occurs. Now, we're gonna get a pretty new roadway. They are doing milling and paving on, Fidel was out there with them in November, surveyed the street, identified the sections that needed repair, and they will be milled and paved before Mast DOT signs off on it. So we're getting, we'll get a relatively brand-new street, but, you know, if a sidewalk falls into disrepair two years from now, it'll be the city's responsibility to take care of it. Frankly, we're likely to do a much better job at it and be much more responsive than the state will be, but it will be on our dime.
Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. President.
I'm sorry, Calvin, are you done?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. You have repeatedly stated tonight that this was a promise that the city made, but his, but in my opinion, that's not true. And why I say that is because the person or the individual who made this promise, as stated in the letter, was the receiver, state-appointed receiver. Mr. Spence was not hired by this council, such as you are. He was not duly elected by the city of Chelsea residents, the voters in that position. He was appointed by the state. In my eyes, this was a position of a state person doing what was best for the state itself with another agency. So you can go all day and say, hey, we made a promise. You know what? No. The City Council or the alderman at the time did not go on board with this, they did not sign anything, nothing. It was a state receiver who decided to make this deal. So no way in har, in no way, in shape, or form, will I ever agree that the city made a promise. That wasn't the case. It was a receiver. Yes, did he have all the powers? Absolutely. But it was never the city, and I don't think a mayor or any city manager would have done the same. Just, I don't see it happening, because quite frankly, I don't think he could have gotten it past any city council, any alderman at the time. It was done at a time when this community was at its weakest and when it had its own mole in place. So let's not keep on saying that we, the city, made a promise. We didn't. That was a receiver, and he worked for the state. So it was probably the state promising itself that they would take over. They saw an opportunity and said, hey, we got someone who's going to agree to this, because Chelsea never would have agreed to this at any other point in time. So let's call it what it is. But this has been, this has come to us, I've been on the council now 20 years, this is the third time that this has come to us. First time under, under Guy Sannigate, and then also under Jay Asher, now yourself, and lots of different reasons to why it didn't get passed at certain junctures. Most notably, I think it was, as you state, there were some, there was a, a list of items that the city wanted to see first before it even considered taking on this heavy trucking route, that more than likely will be taking on, you know, our attention and CIP money. You're stating, and I ask this through, you know, through you, through the DBW Commissioner, the last Commissioner or the last DBW Director, Joe Fode, there was a lot of talk going on, and I was at Mast Dot at the time, I remember, about the lights at the intersection of Eastern Avenue. So what is the current status of that intersection? Very busy intersection? And what is Mast Dot's commitment to any signalization that occurs there? All done, completed? What is going on at that intersection?
Eastern and Broadway?
Eastern and Broadway.
We own those lights. We own them now. We did the work, we own them.
Okay, so those are our jurisdiction, they're done. Mast Dot is done, whatever had to be done is completed.
At the moment, Mast Dot's, Mast Dot's jurisdiction ends at Lewis Street. We own everything beyond that. We will take over all the lights that.
Okay.
Except, we will not be taking over the lights at Central and Eastern. Mast DOT will continue to maintain and repair those new lights that they just installed in conjunction with the Silver Line about, at the bridge. We will not be taking over those lights.
Okay.
They will be responsible for maintaining and keeping them upgraded. They're, they're brand-new lights.
What is, now, what is the status of, say, Route 107? I mean, what role does that have at all with Mast Dot and the cities, both Revere and Chelsea? I mean, does Route 107 enter at all in Chelsea, or it ends in Revere?
I think that's entirely a city roadway here, but I would have to defer to Alex on that.
It's a city roadway, still numbered, and therefore eligible for certain. Sir.
So it's a purely locally-owned roadway. It is numbered, and because it's continuing to be numbered, we're eligible for certain state and federal funding for capital improvements.
Okay.
So for instance, that's how we're funding the Upper Broadway project right now. It's an eligible road for federal expenses.
Okay. Tom, what is the current grading condition of the roadway between, I would say, of the, of this portion of Mast Dot-owned highway? I mean, let's say, for example, I mean, they said that they did the work and it's been repaved and so forth. What is the current condition and where are we on its lifespan potentially? Where, I mean, how far are we looking in the opinion of your, your DBW Commissioner and your engineers as lifeline before the next time we may have to do any work there?
I'll have to defer to Fidel. He was out there with Mast Dot over the, in the late fall timeframe, so, and that's how they determine the scope with additional milling and paving.
Yes, so, so Mast DOT doesn't pave every year, right? I mean, I, I think Counselor Recupero said that the, the portion from, from, from Willoughby around the, up to, up to the bridge, a certain portion of it, it's, is in really good condition, and that was paved in, in 2015, right? So six years ago, essentially. A roadway, you know, yes, that is a very, very busy roadway, but, but pavement, it, it can usually last 20 years, right? So, so, and, and, just to be clear, we, we went out there, and, and they showed us exactly what was paved in 2015, right? So, so, so anything that, that was not paved in, in 2015, is, is going to be repaved in the spring, right? So, so that's, that's the majority of it. So, so the area around the car wash, that's, that's in really bad shape, as I'm sure you have seen recently. That, that type, that, that entire stretch is going to be fully repaved, and, and typically, a newly paved street can last up to 20 years.
So what does that essentially mean? I'm trying to understand, that once, when we take over the road, we got about 20-year lifespan on this road right now? Is that what we're saying? Oh, you, that what you're.
Yeah, yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Tom, I understand the, your position that having this matter outstanding takes away from trying to get anything else done with all the other outstanding matters. You mentioned the parking underneath the bridge, which I had experienced working on myself. What are the other, what are the other matters that you are working on, and are those completed? I mean, is there anything outstanding still on the table that we will say, look, the City Council is waiting for everything to be checked, that they're signed, and then we'll take over the road, versus, you know, pre, you know, accepting it prior to those other issues on the table being left open, and then having no bargaining position?
So completely unrelated to this project, we are still negotiating with them for the licenses for those two lots that we have, but I'm, we're reasonably close to reaching an agreement there, at least on a short-term license. That, the licenses for those lots will then be folded into a more comprehensive license for all of the lots under the Tobin, but I expect that's at least a year or more away. Then we want to negotiate with Mast DOT for acquisition of the land that it owns on the northern side of the Chelsea Street Bridge for a, for parkland. So the state had passed Home Rule petition to, for the city to acquire the D-Cam-owned parcel on the southern side of the Chelsea Street Bridge. We would like to acquire the Mast DOT-owned parcel on the northern side to create a point-of-access park, waterfront park. And so that's sort of on the table as a topic of discussion once we get through the Tobin project. But that's probably two or three years away realistically. We're probably going to focus our attention on the D-Cam site first. I mean, you know how lengthy these things go. So I really don't think it's realistic for the city to say, until all of that is done, we're not accepting this roadway. We, we had always been operating with them from the day I arrived, under the assumption that what was holding this up was their failure to complete that punch list item that the DPW was maintaining and maintained by Joe Fode when I arrived here. And they slowly completed all of the, whatever work was there. There is nothing left for them to complete on Eastern, with the exception of this commitment, which wasn't part of it, but they did commit to repaving, milling and paving this stretch, as I said, including right to Broadway, even though the jurisdictional line ends at Lewis Street. Look, I don't want, you know, I'm not shilling for Mast DOT here.
No, I understand.
The city made a commitment, whether it wa, I understand the, the legal nicety of that argument. It's a legitimate one. It was the receiver. But the fact is, this will not bode, in my opinion, there will be adverse, long-term consequences to the City of Chelsea for reneging on this expectation that everyone has had, myself included, that at some point, we were going to take jurisdiction of this roadway. And the state has been operating under this expectation for a long time. And since the day I arrived, I've been operating on this expectation that at some point, we're going to negotiate this resolution. And if the city were not to do that, I fear that there will be adverse consequences to the city that just aren't worth it. I mean, they, those consequences will far outweigh the additional cost to the city. This isn't, you know, this, this isn't a huge cost. It is a cost. You take over a roadway, you have to repair it. You have to plow it. There's a cost to this, no question about it. But it's manageable, and in my opinion, this is the right thing for the city to do. And not doing it will harm us in the future.
Counselor Robinson and then Counselor Taylor.
And just kind of briefly, because I touched upon it with the president of council. One of my concerns is I see we're preparing a light at Griffin Way. So that means we're going to have lights, so if we're headed towards the bridge, and then on the other side, there'll be lights. My concern is, cars coming out of Griffin Way should only be allowed to take a right. And the reason I say that, because I don't think there was any kind of traffic study or anything done that would recommend that a light be put at Griffin Way. That's one of my concerns. And the other concern is relating to snow removal and for us to have a comprehensive plan as to how we're going to attack snow removal on Eastern Avenue.
So let me start with the latter point. So, you know, we had to take over snow removal for the Silver Line. We do that. We contract it out every year. I mean, we're responsible, that was part of the promise for the Silver Line, was that the city would take control over the greenway, and we're responsible for that. We're responsible for the Silver Line plowing. And so we do that with a contract each year. We'll probably have to do the same here with a contract. In terms of the light at Griffin, so again, understand, this is a twenty-plus-year effort. That light has been permitted twice by the state to be installed at Griffin. They have a warrant, they've, it passes the state's warrant for accidents, for traffic. It's a light that the records suggest the city has advocated for, long before I arrived here, to slow traffic at that spot, which will allow not only the MWRA folks to exit from that spot, but would allow neighborhoods, Cottage and Bellingham, to e, more easily access the roadway when that light is red. So that light has had a long history, including twice being fully permitted by the state. Why it was never constructed, why in both instances the permit expired, I can't say. The state was again ready to issue a permit, but now with the city about to, you know, considering taking over, the timing just was such that they said, you know, you deal with the MWRA. But, you know, that has been a light that the city has advocated for because it has benefits to slowing traffic at that, on that roadway, which can be kind of a raceway between Eastern and, and Crescent. Between, I'm sorry, Central and Crescent. And so it's something the city has advocated for long before I got here. It will be paid for in full by the MWRA, so there's going to be no cost to the city. It does have benefits, and as I said, has met all of the state's traffic warrants for accidents and traffic to, such that twice the state has issued permits for its installation.
Well, I, I just see it as a, a traffic problem, even though the light is going to be there, and I, and I think anybody who travels that road in the morning or at nighttime, that the traffic is pretty much all the way back to Griffin Way. And people coming out of Cottage or Bellingham will not be able to access Eastern Avenue as easy as people would think it would be because there's cars there. Then when the light changes, those cars will be going ahead, and people from those streets won't be able to get in until there's a, an opening for them to be able to access that road.
Let me suggest this to you. Once this is our roadway, we will handle the request for a traffic light the same way we would look at it on any city roadway. We can ask for an independent, we can have our own traffic consultants take a look at it. I would imagine that they're unlikely to come to a contrary conclusion to the state's own traffic engineers, who've twice looked at this. But we certainly could do that. We could tell MWRA, we're going to do an independent look at this light and not issue the permit until we're satisfied that it meets the warrant and it won't adversely impact traffic on the roadway. That's a fair point. And the city will have, once we own the roadway, the city would have every right to tell the MWRA that the council is adamant that we want an independent look at this. We can certainly do that.
All right, thank you.
Counselor Taylor.
I just want, that, that issue really is independent of acceptance of the roadway.
I have one quick question. Was Eastern Avenue, prior to receivership, owned by the City of Chelsea?
I don't believe it ever has been owned by the City.
So it's always been a state road?
Yes, at least since the 1890s or so, yes.
And so the receiver said, in exchange, I mean, in exchange for them coming in and setting the affairs of the city straight, we were going to take over this road?
I imagine the roadway must have been in particularly poor condition.
I'm, I'm, I'm just trying to get a historical kind of, you know, I, I didn't, I didn't live here then, and so I, I wasn't here, but...
Roy may remember. I mean, I was around, but I don't remember the condition of the roadway. But my guess is it was probably in particularly poor condition.
The, the state highway, prior to Mastod, it was the state highway. State Highway has a policy of trying to get off its books lots of these little pockets of non-connected highway portions. More often than not, the ones that were previously designated as a highway, communities across the state tend to not want to take it on because they realize that they would take on the maintenance and plowing and prefer to better off have the state come in and do that. But the state, the state has, time and time again, tries to go into communities wherever these weird little outlets are. And it's usually, what ends up happening is, more often than not, there's a new highway that was built, and so the connecting, the former highway is no longer the connecting there. And so they've tried to de-designate certain parts, and they can de-designate certain portions, but not others. And when it comes to these little strange portions within the cities or towns, they have to go through a formal process and let the city or town take it over. And more often than not, they meet this local resistance of saying, well, we don't want it, because every city is a town. So this is why I say, at, they took this moment, I believe, took advantage of the moment that they had a state receiver in place to get this going and accept it versus having it done under normal circumstances.
So, so let me, let me just follow up that question then. Is this a situation, this, this is not then a unique situation around the state. So this particular situation happens in other municipalities where the state has a little strip of state highway, or whatever it is, and it often meets resistance, right? I mean, is that, is that...
I haven't been involved in one of these before, but I trust Roy that this happens, and there's lots of resistance. I would imagine there was, would be resistance now if we were on a blank slate and they came to the city and said, we want you to take it.
But was there, was there some sort of rationale back then as to why the city should take it on?
It seems that the state committed to do certain improvements in and around the area.
But if it, but, but, but it would be doing certain improvements on its own road? I don't understand, I mean, if I'm missing something...
From, from Mastod's position, or Mast Highway, it's, it makes operational sense because rather than, when they're, when you're talking about not only maintaining a road and the cost of maintaining a road, but more importantly, the regular maintenance, particularly during the wintertime, you think about their snow plowing process. They want to have their guys...
I know why they, I know why they want to get rid of it.
That's the only reason they would want it.
So, so I understand why they want to get rid of it. But is there a legitimate kind of reason why they would say, okay, now Chelsea, you've got to take this?
I can imagine that, for whatever reason, there might have been an incentive for the, for the state, for the city, to say, yes, this roadway's in particularly poor condition, it's not on your list to get done. We recognize it's probably not going to get done for another ten years. Do it now, and we'll take it all.
But if it's, but, but if it's a state road to begin with, what, I don't understand why the city should, should have to take it on if it was always a state road. So, I mean, I, so, so, so I didn't quite understand all of this to begin with. And so it's, 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 I, I think it's becoming a little bit clearer. And so if I, I just have one more question, and that is, you know, I, I think your point is well-taken about working well with the, with the state. And that we don't, you know, you, you want to be a good partner so that, you know, when we want something, the state might be more apt to give us what we want. So, so I think that that's a fair point and, and an important one. My question is, will we be able to use this then as, as some sort of a bargaining chip to, you know, get some additional thing? I know that, you know, for instance, I'm just throwing it out, but I mean, if the city wanted to build a municipal parking lot somewhere, and, you know, we could get some, some, some help from the state in doing this, and, you know? You scratch my back, I'll scratch yours.
I think, you know, again, I don't want to be put in a position where I'm standing up here, you know, taking the state's position on this. I think the state's position would be, you have been holding this over our head for twenty years. Every time you want something, you say, but, you know, in return, we're going to get, we're going to take that street back to you. And I think they'd say, it's time now to meet the, to keep your promise.
But, but I mean, if, if, if it was, it was basically foisted on us, I mean, I think Roy's point is, is, is a decent one, that this was the state receiver that made this promise and no one else. So, you know, none of the citizens of Chelsea ever advocated this, and this city council represents those, those... So, 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 I mean, it's a, you know, I understand your, your point, but I mean, I think that there's another side to this too, that today, the city of, the citizens of Chelsea are represented by this body. And this body has an obligation to represent those people instead of a twenty-year-old promise by a state receiver. So, so I mean, there is, there is that as well. So, you know, my, I guess my question then is, you know, what is it that we can do to, you know, are there, are there other things that we could possibly do or try to get the state to help us do that would offset some of these, you know, additional costs or whatever it is? I understand that they may not be that great, but, you know, just to, just to get it off their books, if they wanted, wanted us to take it over, can we use this for, for something in addition to what supposedly the, the punch list was?
I would say in fairness, no. I mean, I think, you know, and I understand your point. We have to best represent our current constituents. I'm telling, my recommendation is the best way we can represent them is to keep this commitment that we have made and recommitted to, time and again, whenever we make some deal with the state. So even the viaduct mitigation package, part of that was, and at the end of all this, you're taking that street back, correct? And our answer is correct. As soon as you finish that punch list.
But to Todd's point, to my point earlier, you know, I, I started that whole surplus process with the property underneath the Tobin Bridge in 2012. And yet, you're telling me we're still two years away from, you know, signing the official licenses? That's a ten-year process. If they want to talk about delay, I can turn around and say, hey, you guys have been dragging the feet on, on our, on parking underneath the Tobin Bridge, you know, what's up with that? It's like, so why not, is it impossible to tie it all together? It's like, give us the leases, give us that, and we'll, we'll, we'll play ball with you. It's like, is it, no?
I, I, I would, I would consider that unfair bargaining, to be honest with you.
Bad faith bargain, okay. Counselor Robinson.
I guess it would be to the president, you know, if this goes back to the deal that the receivership made with them in regards for the city, who was bankrupt at that time to get the money, was, was this part of the deal somehow, that we would take over Eastern Avenue? But we don't have any of that information to be able to...
Yeah, I, you know, it's impossible to reconstruct.
Well, I would, I would say that it had nothing to do with money, because think about it, if you think about it, why would you want to burden a community with an increase in maintenance costs if you're already in a bad position? Again, I think this just had to deal with, you know, something that the state has been trying to attempt to get rid of for years anyway, because that's their policy. You know, this, this is a one-off, a bunch of one-offs. Because it, this piece of road does not make any sense for Mast Highway to keep on its system. It just doesn't, I know this. And that's their guiding principle. It's a roadway in the middle of nowhere, doesn't connect to anything else, and so forth. Just long-term concern is, we know that this is a heavily-traveled route. It does connect, and it is a feeder two, one A, and so forth, and, you know, Route 16, it just, I'm, I'm, I'm a little... They have to recognize that there's a lot of traffic that is being driven there by their other highways, even though it's off. It's still somewhat connected by...
So, look, I don't want to understate the burden, because there is a burden. We've definitely got to plow this every year, that's a cost to us, and we'll have to do some minor repairs. But this isn't a huge burden to the city to take on the stretch of roadway. At some point in the future, twenty years from now, yeah, this whole state, the road probably have to be reconstructed. But at that point, we'll probably go to the state, just as we did to reconstruct up a Broadway, and say, fund this project for us. And, you know, that, we'll get on the tip, and we'll get funding for it.
Any other questions? Seeing none, thank you, Tom, appreciate the time and your staff. We'll now close and give us ten minutes for Rickett to reset so we can start that 7:00 PM meeting. We'll now close and give us ten minutes for Ricky to reset so we can start that 7:00 PM meeting.